Ready here?
Let's go.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. We appreciate your time this evening and look forward to your constructive feedback on the pool improvements. As Sean mentioned, the plans that we had originally submitted had included the myopia property. They no longer do. Everything is proposed on town land with the appropriate setbacks from the property lines. Just to give you a little bit of project background, the reason that this pool is in need of replacement, right now it's losing hundreds of thousands of gallons of water every season. It's insufficient filtration within the pool, skimmers and return lines are insufficient to meet code. The repairs that were done to the deep end a number of years ago are cracking and beginning to fail and need to be fully replaced. And there's insufficient decking around the pool for safe clearances for lifeguard as well as pool patrons to sit. And finally, the septic tank, the septic system can only accommodate about 75 people, which is severely limiting, obviously, as a resource. So, we're not the only ones that have looked at this pool, obviously. We have a construction, maintenance and repair division that has come out and taken a look at the pool. The filtration systems are absolutely in need of replacement. The piping around the pool is made of cast iron and is likely failing. And the bath house and guard area and first aid areas are all out of compliance with current code. So, in order to bring everything up to code, a full replacement is necessary. In looking at the site and in considering what current aquatic programs are now offering, many residents are looking to their towns to provide swim lessons, which they consider a life skill, survival skill. And as part of that, pools now must be fully handicap accessible. So, currently, the pool that you have now has ladders to get in and you would require a lift. But what we're offering, and that's, so that's for really folks that are in a wheelchair and are fully disabled and fully assisted. But there's a humongous cross-section of the population, from ages zero to 110, who aren't in a wheelchair but have mobility challenges. So, in looking at potential reprogramming for the pool, we took a look at a zero-depth entry, which means the entry starts literally at zero water depth, gradually slopes down at 5% to a waiting and swim lesson depth, and then transitions again to lap lanes. So, what I'd like to do is just go through the project with you. I understand you guys are focused, as we heard from the last presentation, on public safety, traffic, aesthetics, and fitting in with the character of the town. So, that's what I will focus on in my presentation.
Can you identify yourself? I forgot who you were.
I'm Weston and Sampson. My name is Sherri Ruane, and I am the project manager for this particular project. And with me in spirit are a team of engineers, scientists, architects, landscape architects, and aquatics designers who have been working on this project with me and have helped do the assessment of the existing pool, test pits for the septics, borings for structural, and really fully understanding the site.
Are you employed by Weston or Aquatics?
Weston and Sampson is the parent company. The Aquatics Group is a division of Weston and Sampson.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, in your packet, you have an existing conditions plan, you have a demo plan. Just to give you the Cliff Notes, the existing pool and bath house and sheds are proposed to be demolished. The existing gravel parking lot and some remnants of botuminous paving are also proposed to be removed. What's proposed to go back in is a new, safer, more organized parking lot that includes one-way travel off of Bay Road, through and back out to help facilitate drop-off and pickup, as well as really improve turning movements of vehicular and resident safety. There is a drop-off area that has been designed to facilitate camp and pool user drop-off and pickup. And this design, as well as the entrance location and exit location, were done in concert with a traffic report that was done by World Tech engineers and has been submitted as a part of our hard copy in these, in these files. And I can get more into that in a bit. All of the storm water from this parking lot is being captured and infiltrated into the ground in chambers that are below the parking lot. Currently, the drainage patterns on the site run either towards the myopia property or into the lake. There's nothing that stops that storm water really from sheeting across the gravel, picking up whatever silt, and then depositing it into the pond itself. So, this new plan, in particular in relation to the parking, captures that in a deep sump catch basin, removes total suspended solids, and then puts it into an infiltration system that, again, provides more treatment. So, the water that ends up recharging into the ground is cleaner than the surface water that's running into the lake. The new buildings, we're proposing two new buildings. One is about 44 feet by 50 feet, and it would have guard room and operations, first aid office, which is required by code, a storage space for pool equipment, and a park camp office that would support the summer camp program, as well as the mechanical room that would include all the filtration and the sump pits. The second building is the bath house building, and there we would have accommodations for family changing rooms, for the mom with the seven-year-old boy and the dad with the eight-year-old girl and a brother in diapers. Where do you go to take care of all that? To the family changing room, it turns out. And then inside the bath house, there are the appropriate number of toilets, showers, urinals and sinks for men and for women. At the far end, closest to Bay Road of the bath house, there are additional handicap accessible facilities that can be locked to the outside during the summer season and used by pool users, and then locked to the bath house side on the peripheral seasons. So, when the park is in use, these bathroom facilities would be open to park users without being given access to the pool facility. And then the entrance to that is actually between these two buildings. One small ancillary feature to the side of the building that has the lifeguard functions and mechanical functions is the, a proposed snack bar. Very simple, more of a refrigerator and a microwave and a freezer to sell prepackaged food, but could be opened up to support other events in the park when the pool is not in use. The new pool proposed maintains the six-lane lap swimming that exists now while providing suitable safety distances between the lanes, and also provides a learn-to-swim area, which is about three, three-and-a-half feet deep. This project is being bid with add alternates. So, the base bid includes the six-lane lap pool and, I'm actually going to go to the color drawing because it's late and easier to read. So, the base bid includes the six-lane lap pool and the learn-to-swim area. And alternate number one would pick up additional learn-to-swim as well as the zero-depth entry. So, this is the area where all the deck is flush, and right at this gutter line, the water is then a quarter of an inch deep and gets deeper and deeper as you move in. We've also provided adequate wall anchors to allow for portioning off of the pool for optimal use. So, family swim could be happening at the same time as lap swimming, and swim lessons can happen at the same time as swim team. So, there's a lot of multi-use. And that's really the main reason for an expanded footprint over what is there now. The other reason is in providing these, this ramped entry. It really allows every person, not in a wheelchair, to enter that pool under their own power. In many cases, in many communities, we find lifts are available, but people who just have a little bit of trouble getting around really don't want to use the lift. They find it slightly humiliating, whereas they'd rather be entering the water with their grandkids or with their kids. And that's what this zero-depth entry really provides. There's also a kiddie pool off to the side, also with a zero-depth entry, which is required by code, which reaches a maximum depth of about 18 inches and is off to the side here. Around the pool, we've provided deck clearance that allows for gathering of the patrons as well as appropriate clearance for lifeguards to circulate. Right now, that is not available. There's only four or five feet around some of the areas of the pool. A lifeguard cannot do what they need to do, and the deck cannot support people sitting there while they're visiting the pool. The facility is surrounded by a fence. There is a perspective rendering at the back of your packet that shows there'll be a fence as required by code. The buildings have been designed with clear story windows along the top of bathrooms and changing rooms to let light and air in, harkening back to the windows over barn doors. There is a hip roof with architectural shingling on top of it, and the building itself, right now, is a smooth painted block, and the proposal is a split-face block to give more of a rustic appearance, but also still a resilient surface that can be easily maintained.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
When you got the spoken design set up for you by the recreation committee, how large a clientele were you designing for? Because I keep reading letters to the editor in the newspaper saying, "Make it smaller, make it smaller." And I keep thinking, "Gosh, this is a, we're finally escaping, and now we're going to have a really beautiful pool." My kids hated going to camp. They wanted to get out of town because they couldn't stand the pool, and the pool had a bad reputation. This could be a whole new thing. So, what does the scope of, of the scale that you were given right at the beginning?
So, we're looking to accommodate, accommodate, excuse me, about 274 bathers at any one time. And it is unlikely that 274 people would all be in the pool at the same time because people are milling about and off to the side and having a snack and doing their thing. But that's how many bathers can be, are to be programmed and managed in the pool at any one time. Functionally, that's how many lifeguards will be there, so no more could come unless new lifeguards were brought, you know? That's the intention. And through the-
How many lifeguards are you talking about?
Well, it's one lifeguard for 25 bathers. So, you'd end up with 10, right? At one presentation, I said 25 lifeguards for one bather. That is not, that's not the equation. Nobody in Hamilton is that bad of a swimmer, but they need 25 lifeguards.
So, are you planning on having hypothetically a couple hundred chairs around the pool for people to sit in?
To start out, no. The, the plan is to really have the most streamlined new pool package. And something that folks do in other communities is they either bring towels and sit on them or bring their own chairs and sit on them. And the deck has been sized appropriately to make sure that can be accommodated. But that's not to say that in the future, through the revenues generated by the pool passes, chairs couldn't be purchased that are stackable and weatherproof and suitable for use as the pool evolves and use patterns become more obvious.
I think it would be better to have the pool have their own stuff and have people bringing in all kinds of-
It absolutely is from a management perspective, but I think the town has heard loud and clear that folks really want the most economically wise.
What about moving the, I'm just sorry for this question, but what about moving the fence back so someone's, it was on the grass, so people can sit on the grass?
That's a great question. It's possible. Again, it's, it can be a management issue. The fence can be moved back, but then you're mowing lawn in very close proximity to the pool and the filters, and kids are in the grass and then they're going in the pool. So, it becomes a little bit more of an operations and management issue. It's not impossible. Certainly, we've designed pools where there are lawn areas, but it does create a different dynamic as far as making sure everything remains clean. We can put gates in the fence that allow you to occupy the grass space and also, and then move into the pool, but that would be a longer-term conversation.
What are you thinking in terms of the number of lifeguards, you know, sort of on a regular basis, I mean, you have to schedule all these things. And where would you put the sites? I mean, there must be some setups that are going around the pool.
I can probably answer the lifeguard, the lifeguard situation. Right now, we employ at various times between four to five lifeguards at the current pool at one time. During the park, the park hours, we have a little bit more. During the open swim, we scale it back a little bit for, you know, for usage patterns. You know, there's certainly, and you know, as probably the aquatics professionals know a little bit better, but there are certainly different locations that you would place your lifeguards, you know, in strategic locations. You know, one would be, obviously, you need a lifeguard at the kiddie pool. You'd put a lifeguard in a chair at, you know, the deep end of the pool. The one nice thing, if, you know, if the zero-entry alternate was added, you know, one of the things that we looked at was the longer learn-to-swim area, which gives you a little more room in the middle, kind of the, the middle of the U, which would allow for lifeguards to be positioned in that location as well, and, you know, as well as have room for, for patrons. And one of the things that Sherri did hit on with the current pool and, you know, and through the designs or the, as is, design that you see now is, you know, on three of our four sides of the pool, where it's essentially edge of the pool, six-feet fence. And as Sherri mentioned, you need four feet for a lifeguard to actively walk up and forth, and the patrons can't be in the, within that four-feet zone. So, at our current pool, essentially, three of the four ends, you know, it's, you can't use it because you only have two feet, I mean, you know, two feet of space for patrons. So, you know, this, this design here allows for the patrons or for the participants to be all over, you know? And that's why, obviously, it's, you know, obviously, it's larger than what is there now. But when you see what we have now compared to what we have now to this, you know, there are reasons for that.
How did you figure, how many parking spaces are there, and how do you figure parking relative to 275? Thanks so much.
Sure. So, there's 33 parking spaces, and that includes the handicap spaces. And one of the things we are very cognizant of is that this pool is in a park, and it is a, an amazing open space asset in your town, and it's a resource, a regional resource. And we've seen such an amazing response at community meetings and other meetings where people have come in support of Patton Park itself. So, we were working very hard to thread the needle, provide enough safe parking for patrons, but don't pave too much of the park. So, in looking at the potential bather load of 274, we took into consideration the entire park itself. And again, it's unlikely that 274 people will be there all at one time or all in the pool at one time, but certainly, park drop-off or if there's a ball game going on, that was all taken into consideration. And so, one of the strategies, at least for the park program, is that different age groups have different activities at different times. And so, drop-off and pickup are going to be deployed across the site. So, the seven-to-10-year-olds might get picked up by the tennis courts or dropped off by the ball fields, and the littler kids are dropped off here so that there isn't a concentration of traffic in that one area. However, the one-way parking has improved safety. So, let's say it's a really hot day and it's a busy day at the pool. People come in, they have an opportunity to drop off either one parent with the kids or a grandmother or grandfather with the kids, and then move through this parking to see if anything's available. If nothing is available, they're able to then leave and either use the school across the street, the other parking lots in the park, or even the public parking lot near the public safety building is sometimes used as overflow on weekends. And part of that traffic study and in conversations with the police chief, we're looking at improving pedestrian safety across Bay Road with an additional crosswalk. This crosswalk will include warning signage and all of the appropriate appurtenances that go with it, but the ideal location is really right here, to the right of that exit drive from the school, and a sidewalk would be put in that runs along the parking lot to a second crosswalk in this parking area. So, will we be able to accommodate every single person arriving by car right at the pool? No. But as a park and as a really civic resource, we believe that there are plenty of parking accommodations precinct-wide, and that pedestrian safety and security would be improved in order to allow residents to make use of all of that.
So, for example, if there's a swim team meeting, that's a lot of bodies and lots of cars. Will they park on the 1A or how does that going to work?
So, concurrently, how we operate our swim meets is we actually put a sign, believe it or not, we put a sign outside of the entrance into the park, into the, I guess, the parking lot, what you would call the parking lot now, that asks all parents or spectators to park at the Winthrop School. So, they are already actually parking at the Winthrop School without, without having what we're proposing now, which would be the safe access across to, to the pool. So, currently, we are, currently, for swim meets, the away parents or the home parents do park, you know, across in the Winthrop School parking lot. Of course, during swim meets, you know, the, the pool would not be open to the public, so the pool would just be a strict swim meet time for the, for the pool. So, we would lose whatever, you know, public swim, swim people we would have during that time.
Will that crosswalk have a light?
The, the chief recommended that they do not have a light. So, it would be proper signage, though they haven't ruled out the light from the recommendation that we've got from the chief and the safety officer would, is that there would not be a light there.
And how many bathrooms are there?
You know, I really should have counted before you asked me that, but I can tell you. The bathrooms are generated, the number of bathrooms are determined by the Board of Health, and that is a direct result of the square footage of water sheet under and over five feet of depth. And so, in the women's room, there is one handicap toilet and then seven standard toilets, two showers, and then a separate handicap accessible family changing room. So, there's nine total toilets in the women's side, and then there's five, six, seven in the men's plus two urinals.
What's there currently?
Currently, we have two.
Two bathrooms? So, so is there a new septic system?
There is, in fact, a new septic system going in. And-
Excuse, I shouldn't say two, four. If you, two in the men's, two in the women's.
Right. But that's how, that actually is how it's counted. They don't make you split it for men and women. If you need two toilets, you need two men's and two women's. They don't let you split. The new septic system, we're actually looking to put it under the parking lot area. So, that would be in this general vicinity. And then also required by code is a reserve septic field to make sure that should anything happen. So, the reserve septic field is being proposed right next to that. And then there's a storm water infiltration for the parking lot and infiltration happening there. So, the parking lot is actually a really busy, active rectangle of land on this, and it's great because a lot of stuff can happen multitasking in the same square footage. So, that's what's happening there. Some of the other drainage from the pool deck and the roofs is being infiltrated behind the pool and off to the side of the current garage, but everything is 15 feet off of the property line.
Have, have you done the soils testing?
We're actually, so we did soils testing on this side of the site initially, and we're doing test pits in these areas on Friday. But the soils in this area are fantastic, and the percolation rates were excellent, so we expect to find good results, but we are confirming this Friday.
Yeah, because as you know, at high school and middle school, we had to raise the whole thing enormously.
Right. Exactly.
That was pretty much screw-up here.
It would. It would.
And lighting?
Right now, we have some security lighting on the buildings just to illuminate pool deck so that public safety officials can see into the facility. As you know, there are spots right now on the pond itself. It's possible we can utilize the back of that pole to light the parking lot. We're doing a photometric survey right now just to make sure we get the right number of foot candles out there for security, but that has come up at a bunch of the meetings to make sure that there's adequate lighting for folks who need to get out of there after dark.
Where is the opening for that? Is the exit new? Is the current exit from the-
It's actually past it. So, your current exit is actually right where we're proposing the crosswalk, where the break in the wall is, and the new exit is actually down from there. And this is a good thing from a traffic perspective because the intersection of where the Winthrop School exits and where the current pool facility, which is both in and out right now, are so close that it's actually incredibly dangerous. So, people aren't fully cognizant of the comings and goings of all of those. So, offsetting these and making them enter or exit only greatly improves the safety along that corridor.
And it's far enough away from the Asbury Street corner?
Exactly.
And is the playground with its street access going to be closed so that, because that's always been a worry for me, that people stop to let kids out to go into the playground because there's a sort of an entrance to the playground there too?
We are not proposing any additional enclosure. The parking lot itself is open. We are-
So, people can swing through that driveway, let their kids out to go play on the gym sets and so forth, and it serves as an entrance to the recreation area next door?
It could. People could use it that way.
Yeah, and just to kind of, to double back on that point, I mean, that's one of the things that we've been looking at with this site the entire time is, you know, we want to make sure that what we propose at the site is not only for the pool, of course, it's for the pool, but also that it serves other functions of the park, whether it be the improved parking, the lighted parking, the two bathrooms that we're suggesting to the outside, or even the concession stand. So, you know, really to look at it from a park perspective and to make sure that, that what happens at that park is, is, is safe. And, you know, I'm sure people, folks have probably seen it on Saturday nights with flag football. You know, it can get pretty testy down there at the parking, especially, I mean, it's pitch black, there's no spots, people are kind of parked everywhere, backing out and coming in. And even the, the exit entrance, you can only get one car out, one car in at the same time, which, which can cause some issues as well.
Do you have thoughts about snow plowing on this area? Because this is a fantastic entrance to the pond, and if they started plowing, you know, snow blowing the pond a little bit and the town started getting cold winters like we have this year, you could have skating there for five weeks a year or 10 weeks.
Well, we, yeah, the, the current, you know, parking lot, again, is, is plowed. So, I think that's one of the reasons, and Sherri can probably speak to this as well. It's one of the reasons why, again, this is a, what, impervious parking lot because of the, the plow.
Correct. Right. So, it's not pervious pavement, and that's on purpose. Because when you do get a winter like we've had, I don't know if anyone else is, actually, I hate to bring Lexington into this, but I feel like it's the trend of the evening. Their DPW building has pervious paving, and what's happened is on the days it's gotten up to 38 degrees, water has infiltrated, and then the next day, it's back down to 10, and almost every square yard of that parking lot is heaving, and it's a huge problem. So, instead of dealing with that and also in order to accommodate this use, we'd much rather get that water below ground into these infiltration chambers and allow it to infiltrate that way instead of trying to make it go through the surface.
But again, is the Board of Health rule in terms of why you're having to have nine bathrooms?
Sure. So, for every 40 bathers, you need one toilet per gender. So, and that's generated by water sheet. So, and this is, the way that that's generated is if it's under five feet of depth, every person only gets 15 square feet, according to the Board of Health. Now, we find that to be fairly tight. I mean, I like you guys, but 15 square feet in a bathing suit? Kind of weird. So, we are not proposing to max that out, but we're beholden to the law to provide facilities for the maximum amount of bathers that they believe could fit. So, it's 15 square feet per bather in the zero to five, and then it's 20 square feet per bather from the five to seven because you, you need more space to tread water if water's over your head. That's what generates the public health bather load, but that is not going to be the functional bather load. And that's what dictates the number of-
So, if you change the height of the water, would, can you lower it?
We did that, man. We made it as, we made it as five feet as soon as we could. Yeah, we did. We, we have worked very hard to get the least number of fixtures that will still support the population.
I mean, nine, it just seems like a lot of ass.
Yeah, you know, the state of Massachusetts not doing us much help with that.
Right.
You know, it's funny because, you know, bather load is a, you know, a really tricky kind of, you know, tricky thing to look at, and different states are, have different- tricky thing to look at, um, and different states are, are have different, you know, if we were in New Hampshire, for instance, uh, you know, three forty-five would be two forty. So, you know, I mean, that's just, that's just.
Also saying that this is going to be for the use of the park. So if tho- those bathrooms are open to the park, I think that's something that I've always felt was needed for this park. There's no place for public bathrooms.
Uh, any signage?
Um, right now, the only proposed, um, entrance is we're taking what's at the existing entrance, which are those piers that are currently in their houses.
The French?
Yes, the cannons, and there's some, um, dedication, other dedication. We're actually gonna create a garden right at this entrance that has a seat wall with piers that the piers can actually go on. The cannons can be arranged at the entrance. And then what we're thinking is potentially having, um, patent park in letters on that masonry wall, which is only eighteen inches high as this potential seat wall. So it's a very, um, in keeping with the stone wall along Bay Road, uh, that vernacular of site amenity.
Yeah, and just the one other thing that we're, we're looking at or, you know, that we're considering or we're probably gonna do is some sort of, you know, dedication to the, uh, to the, uh, the legion that built the pool before. So some, you know, whatever the terminology is, and, you know, we'd work with them to try to get something there.
Can you explain that, that we know when reading the original paperwork, it was the bather load?
I know.
And you're using the number two hundred and seventy-five. I thought the number was more, what was, what was the?
Yeah.
What was the, what was the usage in the current pool? And then the, I thought the pool was more like three or four hundred bathers, so I'm...
So the usage in the current pool is dictated by the septic because not more than seventy-four people can burden the septic at once. And so it's, it's inaccurately, um, low. What we're proposing, if the full pool were to be built, including the zero-depth entry, the bather load would be?
Three forty-five.
Three fifteen.
You wanna go outside and talk about it?
Oh, three thirty.
If it's not, that's a hundred and five less. The, the zero-depth entry by the fifteen square feet per person is a hundred and five bathers.
Pool's three fifteen, but you forgot to add the, the kitty pool.
Yeah, all right, you win this time. Yeah, the kitty, right, the pool is three fifteen, but the kitty pool is another thirty.
So the, the people who can use this in the summer is, what's the number of people who can sign up to be able to use the pool in the summer?
So the family passes, um, that can be sold and the individual passes can be sold is higher than two seventy-five because it's unlikely everyone would ever, ever show up at once. It's really, comes down to the management of the pool to regulate that. I don't know if you've set a limit, if you're...
No, we haven't looked at a limit, and, you know, one of the things that, that we need to look at too, uh, you know, if this, if this goes forward is, um, you know, what is Wenham's participation, if any, um, from, from, you know, CPC funds or however that works. And then work out the, um, you know, the cost for a Hamilton resident to a Wenham resident, if the Wenham, you know, if the Hamilton cost, if the Hamilton picks up more, if the time of Hamilton picks up more of the cost than, than Wenham, and kind of work it, work it all that way. I mean, you know, what we would like, you know, where we would like to set it is, obviously, we wanna cover our expenses, um, which we currently do with, with our pool now. Um, but some of the things that we have talked about, uh, as, as a recreation committee is to make sure that we do two things. One is we have, uh, excess in revenue set aside for deferred maintenance, and two, uh, have excess revenue set aside to help pay back down whatever debt, uh, the CPC might incur. Similar to the Donovan Field purchase, uh, we charge, uh, all user groups who use that, get charged an extra ten, ten dollar surcharge, um, and then that money then goes back into the CPC to pay down the Donovan debt. So, you know, we'd be looking at some, something similar to that, um, and then, you know, working out the, the number of, uh, non-resident passes as well.
But the number of passes is gonna have a direct relationship with the traffic that goes in and out there. Because people, I would assume if they have a pass and they, they live on Sagamore, are gonna drive to the pool to see if they can get a parking space to get in there rather than call. So on wicked hot days, we like to say here in England, you might have everybody going over there at the same time. So I'm just curious how you, what's your thought on managing that kind of situation?
Yeah, I, you know, I think that, you know, is, is, is an operational thing, you know, as well. You know, it's something that, you know, might vary from summer to summer as we see what the, what the, the actual usage of it is. Maybe the next summer we, we tone down on, on the number of passes. But certainly, we, you know, but I guess part of being a municipality and, and having a municipal pool is you wanna get as many people as possible, the, have the availability to, to use the pass. You know, you'd hate to, to settle, have a, a number in your mind, set the limit, the next family comes in and you say no to, and then go down to the pool and realize there's only two hundred people there when you could have another seventy-four there. So, you know, I think operationally, that's something that, you know, would probably, you know, you'd have to take a, a one or two year look at to, to really hammer down that, that number to figure out, you know, what, what is the optimal number for that.
So there'll be somebody full-time at a gate, at the entrance gate?
So, yeah, so, uh, you know, what we, just kind of let you know how, how the operationally it works. Part of that one building, uh, that, that sharing, that's building there, there's an access entry point. So we'd have someone, uh, on staff there checking people in, uh, making sure they have their pool passes or even selling, uh, drop-in passes or, uh, or selling seasonal passes to, to members. Currently, uh, you know, I don't know if anyone's been up to the pool, but, um, you know, we don't have an access point through our, um, to our pool. Uh, essentially, the lifeguard on duty who is sitting there is checking people in. That's not optimal by any standpoint. So, you know, our lifeguards are doing two things. One is they're turning around, checking folks in, uh, and the other is they're, they're watching, you know, they're watching the, the children or the people in the pool. So this way, we have a dedicated person checking people in, and then we have dedicated people being the lifeguards. Um, and certainly, you know, through the pool director, you know, we can start to rotate. So, you know, whoever is checking people in, you know, from an operational standpoint, we love them to be a certified lifeguard, then they can, you know, they'll check people in for two hours, then they'll rotate, and, you know, you rotate from the kitty pool to the large pool, and that's, you know, usually how these work.
Can you amplify a little bit on how this integrates with the camp programs?
Sure. So we run, our patent park program runs from about nine to one o'clock. Part of the program, we go from five-year-olds to twelve-year-olds. Um, our five and six-year-old, five and six-year-olds that attend the park get free swim lessons. Well, not free, I mean, it's part of the, part of the package if you sign up for camp. You get sw- swim lessons. Um, so, you know, the, the thought is, uh, between maybe nine and eleven o'clock or so, the pool is completely closed to the public. It's just for the, for the park. Um, and then as we kind of go through the day, then we start opening it up for, to the public. Uh, one nice thing about the, what we can do with this pool that we can't do with the current pool is we could have two groups using the pool at once. Uh, we could do activities at the pool. Right now, it's, you know, half hour, half hour in, and we need to get everyone out because the next group needs to get in, and there's just not enough room to integrate, you know, the whole park into the pool. So, you know, we've, we've talked about having different activities or different events at the pool. You can also, you know, you can do that for a community event, but you can also do that for our park.
So would that expand the number of camper opportunities that you'll be offering in the summer?
So the camper, ca- we, we hardly put a limit on the number of, uh, participants in our camp. A lot of it is, is based upon counselor to chil- uh, children ratio. So right now, we're on about a hundred and eighty to two hundred max. Um, if we found that with this new pool, more folks wanted to attend the park, then we simply just hire more counselors, we work the schedule around, and then we can accommodate more folks.
I think that's be technically considered.
I think, uh, you're right. I, I think with, with a new pool or with an updated pool that, you know, we'll, we should hopefully get a bump in, in our park, uh, park program.
Do you have any ideas, is that, is that, is the, the number, is a new number for this pool? Is the septic included in this two-point-five million or whatever? And is the, is there a stone wall that you have to cut through to make the entrance? Is that a historic wall or anything?
Um, the stone wall, um, is in some various levels of repair along the corridor. Um, we would be looking to stabilize it as it fronts the improvements. We will be narrowing the opening where it exists now just for the crosswalk, and we will be making sure obviously that there is a suitable opening there. But again, shoring up on either side and reusing any stone we generate into this, um, feature for the piers and the cannons.
Can you show us where the present opening is, where the two world war monuments are?
Yes, so the present opening is right about here right now, and the existing monuments are here and here. And I understand from town sources, those were not their original location, they were put there. Um, they're very close to the road right now, and the reason that they have their own personal.
Who did you hear that from?
Uh, various town sources.
I've been here a long time, I don't remember them being anywhere else.
I've heard it at several public meetings that they, that folks have cited that.
The left-hand end of the parking lot, is that encroaching on the playground?
Not at all.
Can you be a little more specific, not at all?
Uh, no, it is not encroaching on the playground. It is not encroaching on the playground.
Sherry, can you, if you look at your yellow plant on the front edge, you'll get a better view of the whole site.
I've got that, but I don't have a location of where the present entrance is.
Here's the playground here. The present entrance is right here. And this is where the playground is, right over here.
Uh, but you're including the tennis courts too, so I think you need to put your tennis courts on this drawing and...
Yeah, I'll do that for the...
Next time.
Yeah.
That'd be great. And the ball field scale.
Oh, you know what, actually, if you see on the, um, on the traffic report, which I'm sure you'll be poring over later, is, um, here's your, here's your existing entrance, right here. Here's your playground. Here's the tennis courts, and here's the basketball court. So that's figure one in the traffic report. It shows the proposed parking as well as the existing, uh, so you can see here there's actually a fairly mature stand of trees that we worked very hard to save in this, um, from a grading perspective that separates that from the play.
I'm so...
Can I ask you something with the, is it possible, two things? Is it possible to flag where the entrance and exits will be on the Bay Road by you guys so we could see it when you drive by it? And then the other question is, are these buildings in elevation? How much higher are they gonna be than the current building?
Um, sure, so...
The deck is lower?
Um, yes, exactly right. So the deck right now of the pool is actually at street level. And as you notice, the back of the deck slopes pretty steeply off to the site. We've actually slid this pool, the bathhouses, the parking, into the existing grading of the site. So nothing is perched up on the site, it's all slid into the natural grade. So the pool deck itself is actually four feet lower than is existing, and so all the buildings are also lower. They're all still one story. Um, the roof on there now is a, um, square roof with a peak. These are, because the building is slightly longer to accommodate the bathrooms, um, that is slightly longer, but the character is meant to be as close as possible.
Excuse me, Sherry.
Sure.
Ed, I'm just, if the audience can hold their questions so that the board can hear, this lady is videoing it, and I'm trying to tape record it. Um, and it's just very hard for me to do minutes with a lot of conversation, so. I couldn't hear all Claudia's questions and answers, sorry.
Getting, getting to the buildings that you were just talking about, um, and it goes back to what we were talking about earlier tonight, was, uh, you know, the visual aspect of the buildings, how they relate to the town. Um, I know that currently there's, you know, concrete block buildings there that I went to every time I drive by it. You know, a nice brown color that's on them right now. And, you know, these are now concrete block. You know, what we were talking about earlier, you know, it's, to me, it doesn't fit at all in with the character of the town. Um, you know, like somebody said earlier, it'd be better with, you know, clapboards or, you know, something along those lines. I know why you're doing it, but I'm sure in other towns, you've probably dealt with this, and they're not all concrete.
Most are concrete because it's a ten-week-a-year function for the most part, and, um, the cost of those materials greatly increases.
No, I understand that.
And the main, right, and main, that's wise. I, I agree.
If you're gonna do this and it's gonna be your fifty years, you know, you, you spend, I mean, everybody's concerned about the cost, but you spend their extra time to do it right.
The architects, uh, who are working on this agree with you wholeheartedly and have suggested that should funding become available, you could clad this with a Hardy plank, and it would still fit with the architectural shingle roof and the barn window theory. But out of the gates, um, it was a value engineering conversation.
Is it possible to mitigate it? If it's, a cinder block building looks like a prison. I mean, there's nothing pretty about cinder block. Is it possible to mitigate it or to sort of take the curse off it with some kind of vines or landscaping or something to make it less ugly from the streetscape? Because, I mean, now, as Brian says, it's pretty hideous now. This isn't exactly dramatically better.
No, they will be brown, but...
Brian, what, you've got an architectural upgrade in mind?
No, I, I just, I would prefer different materials. You know, I, I mean, it's exactly what we were talking about earlier with a very big, you know, it's gonna be, this is gonna be right there. I mean, it's right on the road.
But can you use a cement board clavering or something?
Well, that's what she, that's what she was saying, to kind of value engineer it out.
I mean, it's po- it's possible. At the, the, the way that the, the package is now, that's not included. But it absolutely is something that should the town, um, find funding in the future, it could be done. It could be added.
What's the cost of it, Michelle?
About doing it right the first time.
I couldn't agree with you more.
Hardy plank is not that expensive. It's a drop in the bucket, you could cover the whole CMU with Hardy plank.
I can't hear you. I, I think the board has exercised their conversation for a minute. Are there any comments from the audience?
What's the, what's the other question?
You know, I don't, off the top of my head, but I believe it's at least a eighty to a hundred thousand dollar difference because of all of the, it's not just the Hardy plank. It's like the trim and making it meet the size, it's, it's not insignificant. And it's prevailing wage, um, job, and it's a filed subject job. So labor is at...
Uh, I have two questions. Did you say that the new pool deck would be four feet lower than the existing pool deck?
The elevation of the new pool deck in some areas is four feet lower. In others, it's less because of the slopes of the site, but it is, um, set into the grade of the site versus being perched up above, as it is now.
How does that relate to the flooding that has happened in that area previously?
We are completely out of the flood zone and in fact went back to the Mother's Day flood of, uh...
Oh, six.
Oh, six, right, thank you. Um, and that area was never underwater. It was actually up to that gravel road, and so we did that. We also tested down the groundwater, and we're comfortable with that elevation.
And when are you gonna be making a presentation, if at all, to the town of Wenham?
We, um...
I have, I, I, I have asked, uh, multiple times, uh, for the, not only the, the Wenham Board of Selectment, but also the Wenham CPC. The Wenham CPC, uh, indicated that they did not want to, uh, did not want to have a presentation uh, until, uh, after, uh, March twentieth. Um, so, uh, right now Christine Berry is, uh, actively talking to the Chair of Wenham, uh, the Wenham CPC to schedule another joint meeting, uh, at that point. We have had a joint, we did have, excuse me, a joint meeting with the Wenham, with both CPCs, yeah, maybe a month and a half ago, possibly.
And, and will, um, I understand you have to do test pits and so forth, but will the numbers that will come in on the thirteenth and the twentieth relate to this new design?
Yes, we are issuing, um, an addendum. We issued one today, and there'll be one going out Thursday. Um, for any element that will impact bid price, we are issuing a new drawing to contractors. So some of the things that don't impact bid price, we're not, we don't wanna overburden them with changes, but anything that's gonna impact the bid price, that added side, you know, that sort of stuff, it's gonna be a issue.
Thank you.
Hi, am, am I allowed to call another?
Oh, you do, I'm sorry.
And if you could talk to this board and that board all at the same time, it would be nice.
Sure.
And I know that's difficult to do, but...
Uh, what was the cost of this whole new design?
The, um... I'm sorry, I need to have names from the record.
George Lamontagne.
Thank you. Um, what's the protocol? Is there a, is that appropriate at a planning board meeting? I don't know, I look to you for direction.
And what's your question again?
His question is... His question is, what was the cost of the design to do this design?
This whole new design?
How would I know?
No, I, I, I don't expect you to know. I'm asking if it's appropriate in this venue to answer that.
That's my question to her.
Yeah, he's asking me, I'm asking you if that's appropriate.
I'm asking her, how much did this new design cost, over and above the other?
Well, I'll answer this, it's a question somebody should answer.
So it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
I don't think, I, I.
You're not, you're sure, you're not. The, from the, um, from the design that had the septic, George, correct me if I'm, if I'm right, the design that had the septic on myopia la, myopia land to this design.
Oh, oh, zero, zero.
Okay.
You did it for nothing?
I did.
You do test bits for nothing, I got a job for you.
I didn't do the test bits for nothing, but we, we moved the design for nothing.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sorry.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, I recognize.
Yeah, I got a, I got a statement and a couple of things. First of all, I wanna clarify a case.
Uh, would you stand, would you stand up for an old man and give your name and?
Jose Menes. I have a couple of statements and a question. Statement number one, I wanna correct something that was said here. Uh, we have officially asked Dr. Harvey about three conditions for the Winthrop parking. And one, he has definitely gone to council and asked, uh, if there's any liability. And that, the answer to that is no. We're asked if they would give permission for the town to use the parking facilities at Winthrop, um, as an overflow or whatever for the parking. And the answer to that question is officially that he has not made that decision. So it isn't a foregone conclusion that you can use that parking facility. There is summer session at the school, um, in the winter school during the summer. And he wants to look further into the loading of the parking lot that's there.
And the summer session is a full student, I mean.
It's not a full, full student, but there, there is a summer session.
And it's only five weeks.
So, it, it, and this is not the point. The point is, it isn't a foregone conclusion that you can use that parking lot.
And you had a third point?
I'm sorry?
You had a third one, didn't you?
I can't hear you.
I thought you had a third one.
Yeah, well, I cut it down to two.
Oh.
And it's, and the, the other question, the question I have is, you're putting the leaching field and the reserve field underneath a paved parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it used to be that needed to be aerated, is this popcorn? Is this state, state popcorn which is porous?
No.
It's not?
No.
So you don't need the aeration?
It's vented, it's not, it does not need to be aerated.
That was it, thank you.
Nope.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Steve Ozerowski, Willow Street, downtown Hamilton. Uh, I'm here as a rep, as a member of the Recreation Board. And, uh, I also live walking distance, as does the majority of the population of Hamilton residents, to this area. Uh, I'm just mentioning that in terms of parking. I'd like to point out that the Rec Board is a volunteer board. We have six members, four of whom are here tonight. We strongly support this project. We have listened to this young woman. I, I could probably do the presentation.
Been working for Weston and Sampson first.
Minor point, um, the, the kids who are gonna be lifeguards, they're gonna be Hamilton Wenham residents. This is, this is a great thing. It's, 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 it's gonna improve the park program. It's gonna in, increase the number of, um, counselors as well, eventually. It's, it's probably gonna pay for itself, I'm just gonna promise that, but it, it's, it's a way cool thing. And the fact is that the, that area is walking or biking distance from a large percentage of the people in town. So, uh, you know, we all support it. I'm probably saying much, so I'm done, thank you.
Mr. Lawrence? I've talked to one person who's had a lot of experience with clubs, not pools, but clubs.
Could you speak up a little bit for my hearing benefits?
I've talked to someone who had a lot of experience with clubs, not pools, but, uh, he was interested in the whole issue of day passes as opposed to membership. And, um, I'm just, uh, concerned that if this particular project trends towards a majority of day passes as to whether or not economically it's going to be viable, or how, how does one make an assessment of the viability of this particular project? And I know people who speak fondly of Weston and a lot of communities that are farther inland, where maybe the facility like this is, uh, doesn't have a lot of competing, uh, things going on in the summer, such as what, uh, Hamilton and Wenham do. And especially, I'm concerned, given what I see as a, um, particularly reluctant point of view from Wenham's point of view, uh, in wanting to participate in this. And if they are all on day passes, uh, what are the implications?
So, um, how it normally sets up with, uh, the, the price points for, for day passes and for season passes is, uh, you would set the rate for day passes, um, at a much higher per, per day fee than a seasonal pass, right? So, you know, if you have a hundred days of the year, you can use a facility, and you charge, um, a hundred dollars for a season pass, you, instead of charging one dollar for a day pass, you would charge ten. So you, you force folks to make a decision. What is more economical, what makes more sense for them? Should, to, do I pay for a day pass for just ten times, or do I pay for a seasonal pass? So you, you essentially would get the same, would, you know, if, if someone just wants to pay the day pass, you'd get, uh, you know, similar money for less usage. Um, and then you could take it a step, you could take it a step further with, uh, non-resident day passes. If someone comes from, you know, Essex to use the playground, and they wanna use the pool, well, you know, what would cost a Hamilton resident five dollars, costs an Essex resident twenty-five dollars? So you just set the, and it is very similar at, you know, at, at many different places. And you just set the, the price points at something that, you know, you feel comfortable with. You know, one of the things that we did way back when, uh, with the Pool Committee is, uh, we, you know, we produced a survey. We asked folks, um, you know, a lot of different questions, uh, about, uh, you know, if they currently use the pool, uh, if change, if improvements were made, would you use the pool? And we also asked them, uh, on a price point, uh, for season passes. And, you know, we got a, a good response, said that, you know, they'd be willing to pay somewhere in between a hundred and two hundred dollars for, for a family pass, uh, for the pool. So I think when you set that price point, and then you just kind of, you know, you can take that out to, uh, day passes, uh, you know, you could do day passes for seniors, day passes for children, day passes for adults. So, uh, you can really break out, you know, break out the, how you get, how you achieve your revenue.
There were, I thought, I just remembered the third item. And it's only for your own personal reference, um, the CMU that is presently proposing the cement block, uh, housing, you can cover that with hardy plank, and to give you a point of reference, we just, we just covered the, the old center school for eighty-eight thousand dollars. It's a handle a lot bigger than those two little buildings. So I shouldn't think it'll be that much more to go, and that looks like clapboards, and it has very, very long life and maintenance over and so on. So, just to give you some kind of reference, and that's prevailing wage and everything else like that.
That's a cement clapboard that you.
That's called hardy plank. And they, they can shoot that right into the CMU, and just cover it over and make it look nice. And I, I wouldn't venture a, a number for you, I could get you a number if you want.
One thing to keep in mind just about mass bidding laws is, uh, we bid a base and we bid alternates. When the bid price comes in, the town makes a decision what alternates they pick up. So let's say the bids came in very favorably, we were able to pick up the zero-depth entry alternate. But the next alternate was lounge chairs, let's say. We didn't pick that up. During construction, if somebody wins the lottery and decides to donate money, we can't add those lounge chairs back in because they were not picked up as part of the original bid. But what we can do is increase scope based on available funds once the contractor's on board. So this hardy plank issue is something that can be taken into consideration. We can get a price from the contractor, 'cause maybe when he's there and he's mobilized, he's highly motivated to, to do that, um, 'cause then you can downgrade the quality of the block that you're using, so there'd be a credit for that. So it's definitely something that could be discussed, but in order to get a viable price, um, for what we're looking for, it was.
When are you putting your mod out?
Pardon?
When are you putting your mod out?
The mod, the addendum?
For the, for the addendum, yes.
Uh, Thursday is gonna be a big day for addendums.
Include it? It's not a very.
Are you gonna donate money? Are you gonna donate the money? Eighty-eight thousand, I think.
So, audience is, uh.
Sorry. He was just saying he was gonna.
It's like, uh, one of the questions that, um, we have on our checklist here, where do you put dumpsters?
Great question.
All the trash and stuff?
Yeah, so right now, um, there is a dumpster located right behind the garage. It will remain there, and it's accessible, there's actually gates in the fence right here. So it's accessible from here, and this, um, temporary, you know, this access road for maintenance vehicles only.
Second question is, what is the pool's season? I mean, can you piggyback and overlay on some of the school year so that, um, you could have a swim club that comes in for a couple of weeks, or, or four weeks or something at the beginning or end of the season, so that we get more use out of it?
Yes, so most, uh, I shouldn't say most, but, uh, you know, the, the, the community pools that get a lot of use typically operate Memorial Day-ish to Labor Day-ish.
Yep.
Uh, you know, during the, during the school year, essentially what we could do, uh, would, uh, we could do a couple things. We could open up early in the morning for folks that wanna do lap swim, adults that wanna do lap swim before they go to work.
Right.
Close the pool down during the, during the school day. Open up when school gets out on warm days, um, you know, days that are, are cold or that we don't think folks would use the pool, we can, you know, not operate the pool on those days. And then the same goes out to Labor Day. You, you probably could extend the season, but I mean, as, as all of us are probably aware, you know, it's warmer in September than it is in May half the time, so, you know, a lot of times you can extend it that way too, so, you know, there's no.
That's sort of been the big plan.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Because I don't think the public understands that.
Right, we currently operate, uh, the pool for nine weeks of the year, as is. Uh, we'd be looking somewhere, I think we'd, twelve weeks, maybe, maybe a little, a little bit more.
I think that's a selling point.
Depending on when the days come, you know, I think Memorial Day's early this year, and Labor Day is late.
I'll get back to you, Mr. Lawrence, Claudia.
I, I just, I have two questions. One is, how is this different? This pool different from the one that was presented to the town in?
Town meeting.
When was that?
April.
October?
It was Oc- October?
Yeah, I mean, I can, one, uh, for, for one, uh, we've taken the, the structural bather load down by about a hundred. So, at full buildout here, we're at three seventy-four. Um, I believe at town meeting, we were somewhere in the four forty, four fifty range. Um, and we've also added it as an alternate. So, you know, I think what we need to re, remember, or, you know, or, or think, is that we might not pick up that alternate. So what we see here might not actually be what the pool ultimately looks like. Um, that was one of the, you know, one of the things that we really, uh, you know, that the Recreation Committee really kinda asked Weston and Sampson to do, um, was to make sure that we had options going, going forward when we do get the bids back, uh, and see what the relative cost of those options are. So, um, so from Oc, from October, from the, the, I, I think it was two point five million, uh, we've taken the bather load down, uh, from the total buildout standpoint, and we've also added, uh, you know, the good portion of it to, as a, uh, as an alternate. So just, we talked about a bather load of three forty-five at total buildout.
Mm-hmm.
Without the alternate, we're at two forty. So the alternate adds a, a, another hundred to the bather load. So we could diminish the bather load by a hundred by not adding that alternate.
But what does that mean, just, I don't, I don't know what that means.
And that's the zero-depth thing?
Correct, that's this, so.
So that just denies a certain part of the potential users?
It, it does. Um, but just also to keep in mind, the pool that was presented at that town meeting had a flared, um, very generous zero-depth entry and kind of a fan shape, because we find that the most intensely used, uh, area of the pool is often that zero to ten inches of water with families and kids of all ages.
Yep.
So we typically try to get maximum surface area. That was described as Disney-like by some, I didn't say it personally, really. Um, and that was returned down and reduced to simply get a width that would be appropriate for people to.
That's a design issue. I guess what I'm saying is, just tell me in dollars and cents, you know, it sounded like the town wasn't happy with the two point, whatever that was.
Right.
And so is this, are you going into this with a lesser number? Is that what your intention is?
That is what our intention is, yes. We, we simply won't know until bids come in, and bid prices have been, in general, trending upwards as the economy thaws. Um, so over the last eight months, we've seen a shift in bid pricing, so we can't guarantee, but we have downsized the infrastructure, um, and the bather load, which meant less toilets, what meant smaller bathrooms, um, in order to streamline and get the best price possible.
Is the, that, is the SNAPR quote-unquote a, uh, an ancillary to this?
It is, and, and it's something that, should it be deemed, um, unnecessary, would not be difficult to remove from the project. It truly is an add-on in every sense of the word, and it's like a counter with a fridge and a microwave. So it's not a high-cost item to begin with, but it was something that came up a couple times in the community meetings that people liked the opportunity to potentially have.
And what, and the only other thing is, is Weston and Sampson has owner, Town of Hamilton, and owner, Myopia Hunt. And why would they say that?
Right, and so at the original, um, outset of the meeting, there was, um, we understood that there might be a memorandum of understanding with myopia, that has fallen away. And so they were listed because originally the septic system, the leaching field, was actually proposed on their property, and that's no longer the case.
In the interest of time, I recognize Mr. Lawrence.
Uh, Jack Lawrence, um, sorry. Is there a heater in the pool?
There is not a heater in the pool, that is actually an alternate that should, um, things come in really favorably, we would be able to pick up pool heaters, but there is not currently a heater in the pool.
Okay, and then, so the ten-week season isn't dependent on the heater in the pool?
It's not, it's not, the, it, it can be used, um, it's, you know.
Okay, and then I see part of the parking lot is in the no-build zone in the fifty to seventy-five foot ring.
So we under.
What do you want from the conscom on that?
Yeah, once we, yeah.
Go ahead, 'cause I talked to Jim. So, uh, we talked to the Conservation Agent, so essentially how this work, we are, we're planning to, to file a notice of intent, but we need to get past planning, past ZBA, and so that's, you know, the, the conscom is at the end. Um, you know, we're talking to the Conservation Agent, uh, of the town. Uh, since parking lots don't require a building permit, it doesn't require us to be out of the no-build zone, it requires us to be out of the no-disturbance zone, so that's fifty feet.
So this is twenty-five, fifty, and then the parking lot is in the fifty, is that right?
So we are outside of the no-disturbance. We're not, you know, we're not outside seventy-five, uh, but we are between, are outside the no-disturbance. So, um, plus, eh, eh.
The septic system.
Added on to the fact that, um, essentially we are using the existing parking lot, um, how it's used now is also something that, you know, that we're talking about.
No, it's, it's not, it doesn't cross that line. It's right up against it.
Right up against everything. Thank you, Ash.
I'm gonna close off the, the audience now and get back to the board. We've got, we've got opinions to make, and as I understand it, Christine, we need to write a letter to the Zoning Board of Appeals before next Wednesday.
No, similar to the, similar to the projects you heard earlier this evening, um, this board will begin, um, they'll, they'll do the same presentation for, I believe it's been rescheduled for the twelfth?
Yes, next Wednesday.
Um, next Wednesday, they will do this exact same presentation for this ZBA and begin that process. The ZBA will also meet on April fifth and continue, you know, they'll have two good meetings 'cause the stormwater management report is being, the public hearing notice for April fifth. So ZBA will begin the process, same as you folks. If you have initial concerns tonight, that you can give them guidance to, or me, as we begin to look through the site plan review, that's helpful, so that I can begin to create your advisory letter for the zoning board. But essentially, you have about a month to get it all wrapped up, um, so.
But we'll get the storm analysis?
The stormwater management is probably gonna be dependent on a redesigned septic and the perk test that she's conducting this week, so it's not in yet.
Okay.
Well, the stormwater management plan that we've presented was, um, those numbers, that infiltration system, um, is sized according to that, so we're validating that. I mean, we had already understood that stormwater could infiltrate there based on in, information. So I don't. So I don't anticipate it will change drastically from what you have in those binders, but, um, it, it will be reissued.
So does, any board members have any outstanding concerns to provide?
Well, just that the, uh, you know, I think the, the main thing is something you brought up earlier, which is the price tag. I mean, I think that's the main concern of, of a lot of people in town and, uh, I tell you. Until you can get some kind of a response, it's, it's.
Right.
From a, but a site plan, from a site plan comment?
I, I guess I'm, I guess I'm, I, I don't know enough about bather loading to understand the capacity requirements for parking. There's thirty-three parking spaces to me. They can't tell us while we drop off kids or some of the kids are gonna be dropped off at the tennis court and walk over. I don't get it. I don't, I don't get that parking. I, I just don't, I don't understand how we can comfortably make a call.
So what, what would you like?
What do you wanna have in the different, because?
What would you like?
This is a discussion, Peter, and what I was saying is, I don't know how to judge the merits of the parking that you presented. I don't know if that's a good number or a small number, I don't know the answer.
Okay, so if I could offer, we, in the report that we submitted, the bound reports, the traffic study outlines, um, the number of drop-offs, the time that that would happen and why they've endorsed the thirty-three space parking lot. So that's why we went forward with it. And I just, I'd ask you to consider as well, um, can we add more parking spaces? Yeah, but do you really want us to? I mean, we don't want a huge parking lot in front of the pond and closer to the play. Right now, there's a comfortable distance between play and parking. There's a very safe entrance and exit based on where it hits along Route one A. And the intention is that this is a recreational resource that we're encouraging, obviously, as many people as possible to get there without a car. But we know the reality is people will come in a car. And they'll also understand, once the use patterns begin, that if you don't get there early, don't even bother going to that lot. You've gotta go to the tennis courts or you've gotta go to the public safety building because that's how it operates.
Right, but I, I think part of what you're saying as well is that, that also, just because it is such a pain in the neck, may cut down usage, that's all.
That's, that is, right.
It's a trade-off.
That's a trade-off, you're exactly right. Um, but I think in benefit of the park as a whole, you do not want that parking lot bigger.
Do you have bikes built into this?
We have bike racks, um, yes, included in that entrance.
How many?
Um, I believe we're gonna accommodate at least ten bikes. That's an easy number to increase, um, obviously, it's a small cost.
So if you have fifty bikes coming, 'cause there are a lot of kids coming?
Yeah, then they would chain them to the fence.
Yeah, so, yeah, I know. We, what, we, uh, we probably have to the park, um, we probably, parents probably fill out anywhere between twenty-five and thirty walk and bike, uh, permission slips. Um, so there are bike racks down at, uh, right now at the garage, there are bike racks down by the tennis courts.
Yeah.
Uh, there's bike racks, kind of all, all scattered around the park, so, um, so that's something that, you know, we'd probably add.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, we'd add more bike racks. And again, you know, you're talking stuff that can probably come out, you know, record.
It's a last.
Three hundred, four hundred dollars for bike racks.
Well, and you must have some sort of sense of the demographics of the use of the pool now. I mean, it's, uh, what kind of age groups are you talking about now? What kind of numbers are you talking about? I realize it's a very different situation, I understand.
It's really hard, yeah.
Right, so I think one of the, one of the more promising things, um, that we found from the Pool Committee was, you know, and I, you know, kinda spoke about the questions that we asked. And when we asked folks if they use the current pool, um, only about thirty-five to forty percent of the respondents who answered the survey said that they currently use the pool. And, you know, for the various reasons that we talked about, the bath house, the, the size of the deck. Uh, you know, when we, then we followed that question up, uh, with a, you know, if improvements were made, would you use the pool? And ninety percent of the folks that took the survey said they would use the pool if improvements were made. So, you know, we, we believe that, um, that our usage numbers, um, you know, will increase dramatically, uh, through, through, through a new pool. Um, so, you know, I think the target age, obviously with, with facilities like this are, um, you know, uh, young children and, and families. But, you know, with these added, uh, amenities and possibly doing water aerobic classes, things of that nature, you know, we try to, try to get into the, uh, to the older demographic as well.
It might seem unrelated, but believe me, it's important to some people in town. There's the World War monuments that are there.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not saying they shouldn't be moved, they probably should be moved, but it might be worthy of someone on the Recreation Committee to talk to the historic, either Historic Commission or the Historic District Committee, even though they're not in the Historic District.
Right.
We just authorized at CPC a fairly substantial amount of money to rebuild and remodel those, and they shouldn't be ignored.
Absolutely, point taken.
Might just eliminate a stumbling block somewhere along the line.
Thank you.
Well, great presentation.
Thanks, thank you very much for your thoughtful feedback.
We should come early.
Me too.